I'm grateful to work alongside these women and I'm also just in awe at their tenacity to take something that was nothing and to build on it to bring you our menstrual equity statement today. So having said that, I'm first going to hand it over to my colleague, Ash J. Boye, Director of Diversity Equity and Inclusion.
Good afternoon, everyone. The Cleveland Public Library prides itself on operating with excellence and as the Director of Diversity Equity and Inclusion, a large part of my responsibility is to ensure accessibility and belongingness. The proposal, the resolution brought before you all today, the board, does just that. It provides access to essential hygiene products and it provides, it encourages and it provides a sense of belonging to all the patrons who access our library, its resources, so that they can have those products when they need them. So with that being said, I am very proud of the ladies for all their hard work, their research, rallying the support of Congresswoman Santana and putting this resolution together. And so I'm going to turn it over to the ladies so that they can share with you all some of the work that they've done and what has brought us to this.
Can you come up this way so that you can be seen? I'm looking at the monitor with the folks that are on Zoom on it. They can't see you. And I think it's very important, and I'm so excited about this, but I want everybody to be able to see the people behind what is being done. So thank you, thank you.
As Vice Chair, it's both a pleasure to be a part of this Women's ERG and work with these fantastic ladies. We've been at this for a little over a year now.
Ms. Pete, if you'd introduce yourself and what library you're at.
Oh, sorry. My name is Caroline Pete. I am the proud manager of the Hollywood branch Cleveland Public Library. Yes, again, it's a pleasure to be not only serve as Vice Chair of the Women's ERG for Cleveland Public Library, but serve along with this wonderful team of women and that talk on Tuesdays. So over the year, as we've been working on this, we realized that it's going to take more time for full implementation and therefore that's why we're seeking your support to help us to keep the momentum going so that we can continue to take the steps necessary and not only in providing these materials, but educating the public, piloting of different parts of the program so that making sure that we are on task and not doing something that is not meaningful to the community, engage in all the CPOs departments, campuses, branches, in an effort to bring the menstrual equity policy to fruition. So in absence of Councilwoman Santana, she sent a statement and as you would like to, I can't read her statement, and we do appreciate her support as we move along with this. So she says, "Women faces so many challenges through life. Identifying where and how to pay for feminine hygiene products should not be one of them. I want to empower all women to have the hygiene products they need. Lowering the stress around the products they need helps girls to feel more confident. One study shows girls even miss less days in school when they have the products that they need. We have menstrual equity in our communities. Studies show that women and young ladies are more confident. They don't feel as stigmatized about their menstrual cycle. Having more confident women is good for our mental health as it is good for all of us." And she also mentioned that in the workshop that she attended with Girl Power, she was able to listen to the local young ladies on menstrual equity. Hearing these women's stories about hygiene products and period stigma has convinced her that the recent legislative efforts are on, we are on the right track and we again ask for your support. And Valerie will share a little bit more about that marketing strategy.
My name is Valerie Johnson. I'm the Library Assistant Youth Empresses at the Union Branch Library and I am the served as the chairperson of our Women's ERG TOT Talk on Tuesdays. And it is just a pleasure to be amongst this group of ladies, something that came out and as a leader, I don't have to do it all. So that's Ms. French and Ms. Pete, they took the lead and we all just worked together with this. So in regards to marketing, we're going to need a press release and we're going to need internal and external marketing. It is yet to be determined who our target people, who our face will be, but we are working on that with various people. And Councilwoman Santana has definitely been a great resource and support. She has done it with the city of Cleveland, so we can pretty much piggyback on what she has done and just continue doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell us more about Talks on Tuesdays? And also, I mean, I assume that you're working on getting these products in all of our facilities, but I'm not sure I understand the whole concept of.
Well, we started the Women's ERG became so just an acronym, you know, and I like to be consistent. So TOT, Talk on Tuesdays, so just to be consistent. So when we meet, Talking on Tuesdays. So we don't have to worry about, are we meeting on Wednesday? Absolutely not. We know Tuesday is our day. So just a little acronym, acronym.
Do you mean that you have every single Tuesday of the year that you're meeting with other women?
So our Women's ERG, we meet, our executive board, we meet monthly and then our members, we meet quarterly, just four times. When we start an ERG, this is what we, you know, part of our, our purpose and everything. You just want to be consistent in what we do. So therefore, you come in, you know, if I'm not available to meet on the second Tuesdays of the month, you know, so we know that.
Thank you.
It's part of this effort, it's clearly for patrons and for staff, but then is there a literature component as well in terms of body positive books that were accessing and, you know, displays, especially there's a lot more young adult literature now focused on these equity issues.
And that come on our education piece. One thing that Councilwoman Santana recognized, and she's wrote this out, I saw some at the Hollywood rec center, but she's wrote them out of the rec center, some other places. So she realized that during their pilot piece that a lot of people did, they wanted to destroy sometimes the things and they needed some more education on it. So that's what I meant, especially as a branch manager, having displays in our books and as we, you know, do our collection management, hoping that we can, again, when we talk to the branch managers and people like that, we can bring them on board to have a deeper conversation of what that looks like because we know all of our branches and campuses now, I understand, have different, you know, they have different, you know, populations and things like that. So and when that's what we've been about marketing, we want to make sure that we're targeting the right population in the way that they need to be communicated with. So especially with the DEI portion of this, we want to be very, very, and talking to people to get feedback to make sure that we are doing what is necessary and causing no harm to anyone. So education is very.
Grace, what'd you have to add?
I'm Grace French. I've been at Cleveland Public Library now eight years and I'm currently Children's Librarian at Huff Campus. And I've been on the Women's ERG since it started. I've been enjoying it. I'm here to talk about budgeting, but at this time, I can't really tell you exactly how much each tampon would be, but I can tell you it would be very worth the investment. I know we have just over $360,000 a year to spend on branches or supplies and this would be a small dip in that jar and it would be, like I said, worth it. So this past Thursday, I learned my first Girl Power and Ms. Santana and Ms. Johnson, I did have a breakout session. And after talking to the girls, I was like, there's no doubt in my mind, we shouldn't be doing this.
Well, I'm sure every female who ever comes to this library would say that's way overdue or.
Absolutely, and so many libraries are already doing this.
I can't believe that we've never had these.
Right, and just.
There's never been access in these restrooms and I never noticed it apparently. But I mean, it seems like way overdue, right?
Yeah, and so get this, the one person, when we told him that this is what we want to do, it's a male.
He stepped right up.
Yeah, shout out to John. This year, but we're still working on it, but you're absolutely right.
It seems unbelievable. This never happened before. How many years has this library existed?
So I want to thank the ladies for doing what we created the ERGs to do, right? The employee resource groups were created with the idea of not just working toward, of course, being a support system for our staff, but also working with us to tell us, how can we better support our patrons, you know, and find issues that we should be, you know, having better recognition of. So this is the kind of thing that we want our ERGs to do, bring outside issues that we should be thinking about to the administration and give us an opportunity to find ways to make those things right. So thank you guys.
Thank you, ladies.
I don't know if you wanted to move number 10 up.
I was just looking at that, you know, well, since we're just done with that beautiful presentation, there is a resolution that I'm going to go ahead and move it out of order. It's Exhibit 10, is a resolution to support the Women's ERG Menstrual Equity Initiative. Whereas the Cleveland Public Library Women's Employee Resource Group ERG exists to cultivate an inclusive environment that supports and encourages women and persons identified as women to advance their skills and leadership potential through connection, mentorship, collaboration, education, and discussion. And whereas the Women's ERG seeks to obtain the Board of Libraries Trustee's support of its menstrual equity initiative that addresses menstrual equity issues through advocacy, education, and access to menstrual products for those in need. Now whereas the Cleveland Public Library recognizes that diversity, equity, and inclusion are mutually reinforcing and must be woven through the library's vision, mission, values, strategic priorities, goals, and objectives, and wishes to adopt a statement in support of the Women's ERG Menstrual Equity Initiative. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Library Trustees expresses its support of the Women's Employees Resource Group Menstrual Equity Initiative. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Butt?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And I do want to apologize because there was no joint Finance and Human Resource Committee meeting, I moved to temporarily suspend the regulations of the Board of Trustees in Article 9 and 10, requiring referral of resolutions to committees to consider the following resolution. So moved.
Ms. Butt?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Do we have to reread that resolution because I didn't suspend the resolutions prior?
No, that was new business, I still wouldn't have gone before.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, so ladies, you don't have to stay around for the meeting. You can go and get back to work.
Thank you, ladies. That was wonderful. We're now going to move into the Finance Committee Report. Trustee Corrigan, please.
Yes. Exhibit 1 is a resolution to accept the gifts for the month of March. It resolves that the gifts described in the gift report for March of 2023 be accepted upon the conditions connected with said gifts in accordance with Section 3375.40K of the Harvey Weiss Code. So moved, the report is attached.
Second. Ms. Butt?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 2 is the Fourth Amendment to the Year 2023 Appropriation, whereas the Harvey Weiss Code, Section 57 of 5.40, provides for the amendment of an appropriation measure when necessary, whereas the aggregate of all appropriate classifications in this amendment did not exceed the total amount submitted to the County Budget Commission. Now therefore be resolved that the sums indicated on the attached Fourth Amendment to the Year 2023 Appropriation Schedule be approved. So moved. So what's the biggest thing on there?
So we're in the general fund, we're transferring between our salaries and benefits and our capital outlay, $120,000. And this is because of the Cleveland Foundation Digital Navigator Grant that we received about two years ago, that was over $187,000. We're able to reclass those salary dollars into capital outlay to help us fund a tech, let me see, is it called a tech mobile?
Malcolm, Ms. Malcolm can.
Excuse me, it's actually called, right now, a tech van, but we hope to have a really appropriate thing for the vehicle. What we will basically have is a mobile makerspace, mobile community van that will be able to go out to the community, whether it's a nursing home, senior center, rec center, schools, or community festivals and events, and conduct courses, give people hands-on accessibility, will have Wi-Fi broadcasting from it. So now we'll be able to ensure that people can get online, we'll have technology in there for the, for the participants to experiment and have hands-on training in the community. So this is just one of many initiatives as far as what we're trying to do with digital literacy and directly and proactively affecting our people that are most in need.
So then this transfer allows us to use those remainder Cleveland Foundation funds for this particular project.
That is correct.
Yes. Go ahead.
Should do a naming challenge for the neighborhood to name that.
That's actually a good idea. So John is going to, just so you know, John Malcolm next month will be doing a presentation as an overall for our technology vision. This is one piece of it, but he's got a lot of pieces, so we'd like to, you know, just let you guys know. Yeah.
And the vote, Ms. Butt?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Exhibit 3 is a resolution to revise the capital assets policy, whereas the library's management recommends revision to the previously submitted capital assets policy dated June 19, 2014, to include a separate land improvements category for the capitalization threshold and useful life consistent with the building's improvements category, and to describe the effect of the implementation of Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 87 leases. This is the fourth revision to the original submitted policy dated April 17, 2003, with revisions to 2007, 2011, and 2014. Now therefore be resolved that the Cleveland Public Library Board of Trustees adopts the attached revised capital assets policy effective for the year ended December 31, 2022, and instructs the library's management to be responsible for the implementation and execution of the provisions of this policy and its related procedures. So moved.
Second. Ms. Butt?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 4 is a resolution to renew the maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies Inc. for the support and update and to update licensing of the Munis ERP system. Whereas in March 2006, the library entered into a system agreement with Tyler Technologies for the maintenance of the library's Munis ERP system that continues to expand the functionality of that system implementing modules to improve efficiency. Whereas the library's ERP system includes financials, human resources, payroll, and general revenue, the library needs to continue support to update licensing. Whereas the effect of data determination of the current maintenance agreement with Tyler for the support and to update the licensing of Munis ERP is May 16, 2023. Now therefore be it resolved that the board authorizes executive director, CEO, or his designate to execute all documents necessary to renew the maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies, subject to the Director of Legal Affairs approval for the period beginning May 17, 2023 and ending May 16, 2024. The cost not to exceed the $89,010.52, but the expenditure being charged to the general fund account 13010053-53360, computer maintenance. So moved.
Second.
Does this include your HR and recruiting too? Is it a platform that is like all in totality?
Yeah, we're sort of on the frontier for libraries with Munis, I think.
Yeah, and we just contracted with GFOA Government Finance Officers Association to kind of guide us through, we're actually looking to make sure that we're, you know, implementing the correct systems and that we're streamlining everything correctly and we're actually having our first kickoff meeting this month. So we are going to kind of pull back, reassess, you know, what we're doing right now and how we're doing it the best way.
Yeah, and Trustee Chikari, don't hesitate. This is a profession of acronyms. Everything is something, I mean, all professions have some form of acronym, but we've gotten in the habit of just, just putting them in, like, instead of like.
No, I was just thinking about, as I was driving here and thinking about Orienting Kerr and Jasmine, for example, I remember when I got on the board at TRIC, they gave me pages and pages of just acronyms for me to learn. And like today, I was reading your report and I didn't know what ILO stood for, I thought, is that incarcerated?
No, interlibrary load.
What is that? So there's always.
Yeah, we, I mean, we have lots of them and we have gotten so much of in the habit of saying them, we forgot that there's people who may not know them, yes, so, yeah.
Just for full transparency, HR is working with IT right now. I'm actually looking at a separate applicant tracking system. Munis just doesn't have the key.
That was my question, actually, exactly.
... benefit from for the internal next term applicants, so I just wanted, for transparency, you may in the future, I don't know yet, but perhaps the resolution.
Yeah, once people are here, they're in the system, but we're still trying to find the applicant program that works most effectively, so.
So Munis doesn't offer that as a portal or?
We've actually, it does have a module that allows that, but we actually contracted the Munis last year, it has very personalized kind of attention, training, programming associated with the applicant tracking to see if we could get Munis to really do what they need to do after a year and.
Yeah.
$10,000, I mean, it's just, no, maybe in the future, but our system might.
Having something is so important for your efficiency, you know, now that it's so much easier for people to put 20 applications in for jobs in 20 different places and you're doing so much work to track that, so you need something, yeah.
Ms. Butt?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 5, a resolution to accept gift from the Cleveland Public Library Foundation for Cleveland Reads, whereas the Cleveland Public Library Foundation is raising funds for the Cleveland Reads Citywide Reading Program Campaign, whereas the foundation has agreed to gift the library $10,000 to be used to cover the cost of purchasing 10,000 new toys from Goods Bank NEO. And whereas these toys will be used as giveaways at the upcoming Cleveland Reads mid-year event on May 12th, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees pursuant to authority set forth an RC 337540K hereby accepts this gift from the Cleveland Public Library Foundation in the amount of $10,000 for deposit into the Founder's Fund account to be used for the Cleveland Reads giveaways. And be it further resolved that the executive director, CEO, or his designate is authorized to enter and do and execute such agreements and instruments as may be necessary appropriate to effectuate the terms and conditions resolution, which agreements and instruments shall be subject to approval of the Library's Director of Legal Affairs. So moved. Second, I would point out for Ms. Chikari and for people who forget, one of the great things the foundation has done and that the Friends have done before is those things that might be questionable in a larger ethical or moral sense for the library to do as its business, the foundation, but where it's important for us to still have those adjunct abilities, the foundation and before them, the Friends have always stepped in. And so purchasing $10,000 for the toys from the taxpayer funds is not as comfortable as having the foundation board decide, hey, Cleveland Reads matters, if we can do some door prize giveaway type things for them, why don't we help the library do that? And this is that sort of grant and that's sort of continuing thing the foundation and before them, the Friends have always done for us and we're very grateful.
I have a question, does anyone here have ability to answer maybe who do about what are these educational toys, like I gave away with parent-child home program? What kind of toys are you getting?
Gosh, I'm going to butcher the names.
It's all different age groups, I suppose.
Yeah, we have a manifesto and I can make sure I share, Mr. Fisher, to share with the board, but there are Legos, there's, gosh, what's the baby book there? Squish, Squish. I don't know, my kids are, is that a big deal? I hear it's a big deal. They started using toys, new toys.
They're not Teletubbies from a prior generation.
That's my, that's my children's age, but, but yeah, so they're new toys, they're part of our partnership with Judy Payne, who started the Kids Book Bank. She started a new organization and you're able to get these products at a very, very low cost. So we're sponsored, so the library will be a sponsor via $10,000. And then Erica has a good idea of how we're going to give them away.
Sure, so we're going to give them away at the new plant and we're going to use our wheel that a lot of our patients are now familiar with, so they're going to spin a wheel for the prize, so they will have to be signed up for Cleveland Reads or they would have had to just sign up for Cleveland Reads and then they can spin that wheel and give it to the tour.
Wow.
Thanks, Erica.
And I'm thrilled you're working with the new Goods Bank, because that's a good way to get leverage.
For Judy, is it?
Trustee Butt, this is Tracy Martin, I'm on virtual. Some of the toys we're getting specifically are Candyland and Play-Doh, the Play-Doh Fill-in Drill Dentist Set and the Play-Doh Ice Cream Truck, those, I don't know if anyone remembers, those coating critters, the pets where you put all the little legs in and like some of those new Squish Mellow toys, which are really like, yeah, just squishy little things. But that's our specific inventory of the toys we're getting.
Ms. Butt?
Yes. Ms. Chikari? Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
You might still have a conversation with.
Exhibit 6, a resolution to accept tech cred program grants from the How Department of Development, whereas the How Department of Development's tech cred program allows employers to invest in their employees by providing grants on a reimbursement basis to cover costs associated with obtaining certain technology-focused and industry-recognized credentials. Whereas employers who apply to participate in the tech cred program and are accepted are eligible to receive reimbursement of up to $2,000 per approved credential, up to a total of $30,000 in reimbursement for funding period, per funding period. Whereas the library applied to participate in the tech cred program was approved for employees to receive credentials in boiler operations and maintenance, electricity for HVAC in buildings, Microsoft Power Platform Essentials, Adobe CS6 Design Tools, and Microsoft Data Azure Essentials. Because of the nature of the credentials that are eligible for reimbursement of the tech cred program, the library has selected employees from property management and IT departments to participate in the tech cred approved courses. The library intends to seek reimbursement for a total of 15 credentials at the rate of $2,000 per credential. Now therefore be resolved that the board pursuant to the authority set forth an RC 337540K hereby accepts the grant from the How Department of Development in the amount up to $30,000 to be deposited in the general fund account 10104342300, stated on a reimbursement basis following successful completion by selected library staff credentials and authorizes executive director, CEO, or his designate to execute such instruments or agreements as are necessary to effectuate the terms of the grant, which agreement shall be settled for the approval of the Director of Legal Affairs. So moved.
Second. Ms. Butt?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 7, a resolution to amend resolution authorizing payment of insurer's panel rate to Oval Tree Deacons for employment matters, whereas on January 19, 2023, the board adopted resolution authorizing the library to pay the hourly panel rate amounts specified by its insurer, Chubb, to Oval Tree Deacons, Nash, Smoke, and Stewart PC for their work on employment matters covered by the library's Employment Practices Liability Insurance Policy. Whereas the panel rate approved by this board on January 19, 2023 consisted of hourly rates of 345 for shareholders, 275 for associates, and 105 for paralegals. Whereas through subsequent dealings with Chubb, it was discovered that the correct panel rate for service provided with paralegals is $125 per hour. Now therefore be resolved that the January 19 resolution authorizing payment of insurer's panel rate to Oval Tree Deacons for employment matters is hereby amended to authorize the library to pay the hourly panel rate of 345 for shareholders, 275 for associates, and the amended 125 for paralegal to Oval Tree Deacons, Nash, Smoke, and Stewart PC for legal services in connection with litigation covered by the library's Employment Practices Liability Insurance Policy, which expenditure shall be charged to the general fund account 11400053-53710, Professional. Which expenditures shall be charged to the general fund account one, one, four, zero, 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 five, three, dash, five, three, seven, one, zero, professional services. It requires that the fiscal officer continue to provide a report to the Board of Tribe Board Trustees of fees paid to Oval Tree on a quarterly basis. So moved.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes, I have a question. Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Is this, what is our term for Chubb? And when do these rates get reviewed or renewed with Chubb?
Well, we do, the rates are about every year, I think. As I recall, I think we've been amending the rates almost every year based on what Chubb approves.
Correct. So, excuse me. So our current insurance policy with Chubb goes through.
Hey, Brian, you probably, since we have a new board member, we should introduce ourselves before.
Yes. I'm Brian, School Director. So that being said, our insurance policy is drawn on August, August. And then as far as the panel rate goes, that's negotiated between all of Chubb and. In this case, Oval Tree Deacons are the kind of small choice.
That's great. You're actually, it's lower than their typical rate. So congratulations. Work on that.
And, and in fact, the reason it happened, the reason a resolution passed on was January is because. Chubb does its negotiation year end rather than when we do our policy. So, so that's how that happens.
Thank you.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
The balance of the finance committee report is the fiscal officers' report, report A, report on investments, report B. Report on conference and travel expenditures, report C, the report on all vendor expenditures, report D. Report on expenditures made by the owners contingency funds for the Huff Jefferson West Park Woodland Central Distribution Facility. Lorraine Eastman, M L K Junior, Brooklyn and Rockport Branch campuses. Report E, a report on expenditures from the owner's contingency fund for the high density shelving project at the main library, report F. And the report G, which is for fees paid for legal and consulting services for the period of the first quarter, March, January one, twenty-three through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. That concludes the finance committee report, Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Corrigan. And Mr. Trustee Harris, since absent, Alice, would you mind reviewing the human resource cabinet report?
Sure.
Thank you.
Exhibit eight is the regular employment report. Exhibit nine is the retirement recognition citation.
We have to. Vote on eight. We'll do one at a time. That's okay with you, trustee.
Has looked at the new hires and resignations and terminations.
I would second that.
Accept that report.
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I'm gonna abstain.
So noted. And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
I'm the candidate, Mr. Michael Parker. No relation.
So exhibit nine is the retirement recognition citation, which has been issued for the following staff member on the occasion of his retirement. Lauren Spinigano, thirty-three years of service as our I T director. Is he here today?
No, Larry isn't. He, he was, last month was his last days, but we, you know, we said our goodbyes to him last month.
Right. We all, so be it resolved that the citation for the above staff member be presented by the Board of Trustees. Appreciation of his faithful and dedicated service given to the library by having reported in the minutes of this meeting. And be further resolved that the citation be sent to him forthwith since he's not present at, at this meeting. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And John, I, I only want to ask this as being the old member of the board of the, of the so-called leadership team that. Bob had back in the days when we were brand new in I T. Is Larry the last one still or is Mr. Hood, I guess, is still with us? And other than Mr. Hood, we've lost pretty much everybody from that group in terms of retirement, the old Bob group. Oh, okay. I didn't realize. Okay. I've not seen you in ages.
Each time we thought we can't possibly get along with Bob Carter or whoever it was.
Yeah, Bob Carter, Edward. But it wasn't significant. And for those who don't know. The Cleveland Public Library was on the cutting edge, as Marilyn Mason, our director, used to say, but just far enough away from the blade that you don't bleed to death. But we've been on the cutting edge of, of library technology and, and John, we're so grateful for you to be our leader now on those issues, but. It does mean that guard is pretty much fully passed now. All we have left is Novak and Hood, so.
And John's gonna tell us all about A I as well as I T, right?
But I, for me personally, I'm obviously, and I've known Larry the whole time I've been on this board and, and. I remember for those who know him, he came in as a blunderbuss and he's been a blunderbuss pretty much the whole time. For good and ill, mostly for good, but Larry's a strong personality and he devoted that personality largely to the library. We're very grateful for that. So I'm glad we recognized him today. And I see Mike roughing that and nodding in the back because he knows about some of that stuff in the early days, so.
Did you vote on this one already?
Yes.
The report H is a report on sickly utilization. It looks like we have fewer sick people this year than last year, mostly. Um, so I'm moved to accept that report.
It does have to be voted on.
Report I is employee demographics and the report J is insurance summary report. That's the end of human resources.
Thank you.
I'm the sergeant chief talent officer. Can I just mention on the last three reports, just as a reminder to the board, the sickly usage, the insurance, as well as the E E O report we pull quarterly.
Right.
So this is as of, the E E O report is as of the P P A two twenty-five. And that's now including race, gender, as well as the E E O classification. We had some public comments on asking who convinced the classifications of this report.
Thank you.
It looks like we still, we don't have alliance here, but I suppose that's probably acceptable, given our distance from Hawaii.
Well, we're doing, we're doing a program next month on Hawaii, so we're trying to do our best.
We're now going to move into the community services report. Trustee Parker, please.
Yes, we have our monthly activity.
Could I get an opportunity to introduce Nancy? Because if you look in your packet. Right? You will see that she has included this trends piece that is brand new for us, really being able to examine where we are. What this stemmed from is I had a conversation with Nancy about the fact that. Many library directors were, we have a listserv that a library director sent things to and everybody is freaking out about where they were as far as circulation was. Compared to pre-COVID, to where we are now and examine, examining things. And what we found was basically, I shared that with Nancy and she. Took some of those things and looked similarly at them. And we're basically in the same boat as everybody, but let me give you an opportunity to, to see what you saw in that.
Okay. So as the director said, I'm Nancy Maxer and I'm an alleged manager working in the strategy office. And I'm actually glad you had asked me last month to sort of go over the report. I'm kind of glad we waited because I think this will give us a much better picture of. You know, where we're at right now. So the first one I wanted to look at is our hours open for the last five years. Just note, I took the last, I took from twenty eighteen through the first quarter of this year and compared everything. So you can see, obviously, we had the huge drop. During COVID and, you know, we were closed a couple of times for extended periods. There's a couple other factors that go in there. So in twenty nineteen, that was when we celebrated our hundred fiftieth anniversary and. All of our branches were open at that time. We completed safe form and dry through twenty eighteen. So there's a little bit of dip in there. And then somewhere during the pandemic, I didn't actually go back and check the exact date, but we did modify our operating hours. To go to ten to six every, or six days a week rather. And then also affecting this is we started our F M P project. So we've had as many as seven branches closed at the same time. Because of that. And right now we're at five branches. So, and that's approximately a thousand hours a month that we're closing out, being open.
So this has more to do with the capital work being done, not necessarily people being disinterested post-COVID in coming to the library.
Right. Yeah. It's just when we're even available for.
Right.
Time constructions. And I do think this is, this is a good number. I mean, I know there's not a lot we can do to control, you know, with F M P and all that, but. I do think the numbers affect the rest of our services and numbers because if people can't get there, they can't use our services or we're not available to them rather.
If somebody points to our circulation being down, one of the reasons circulation isn't just COVID, it's that we don't have as many branches open because we're fixing the branches and that's why.
So visits, obviously, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen were really great years for us. In twenty nineteen, we had nearly two and a half billion patrons come through our doors. Right now, we're at about forty-seven percent of our pre-pandemic number, which is a little low. But, you know, people are coming, starting to come back. We could go to the next one. So this is actually since June of twenty-one. You can see there is a trend upward. So, you know, even though we do have branches closed and our hours are cut. Our average visits are up thirty-one percent since January of twenty-one. So that's, that's a great trend to see. And in addition, we, a couple of the Westside branches that are closed are typically our higher visit branches. So. You know, once Eastman reopens and Lorraine, and also there's still, yeah, walls. The West Park branch, the people counter system is actually still being calibrated. So we don't have a good number for that, but once that is in there, those numbers are just getting way higher. So.
I've, I've been by West Park twice since we reopened and it's wall to wall, almost like it was on opening day, even with regular service. So I know once the people counters work.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it'll look great.
Yep.
So, you know, circulation is kind of rebounded and leveled off. I wanted to note particularly the difference between the e-materials and the physical compared to twenty eighteen to where we are now. It was just our e-materials accounted for just ten percent of our circulation back in twenty eighteen and now it's almost half of our circulation. And I just want to mention that. The C P L and the Cleveland Consortium have about three million items, digital items, which makes us. One of the largest digital collections in the country. So I get emails almost every day for people asking to get a library card. No matter how much it costs. Next one. So, you know, while our circulation is down from before, again, since January twenty-one, we've seen a forty-six percent increase. So again, great, great trend. And I think we'll easily beat our total in twenty-three than what we did in twenty-one and twenty-two, so. So computer use, you can see that's really, really down, but. I want to point out with the computer use, you know, in addition to the time we were closed, even when we did reopen, we had occupancy restrictions and. We imposed time restrictions on the computers. So that had a, a big, you know. A big impact on our computer use.
Yeah, the number that's measured is the number of separate users, not the.
It's the number of computer sessions.
You think that's because of more people have smartphones and they're able to.
That's another thing. Yeah, actually, I'm glad you brought that up. I think since the pandemic, you know, everyone's a lot more connected now. C M S D, all the kids have. The Chromebooks or whatever. We've done a lot of work with PCs for people. People are just more connected than they are now. So they don't necessarily need to come into the library like they used to have to. So again, since twenty-one, it's up fifty-two percent. So, you know, we are, we are making strides. It is, it's looking better. And the next one, so this is Wi-Fi use. It really, really dropped after the start of COVID, but everybody stayed at home. So they weren't even coming to our, sit in our parking lot and use our Wi-Fi. But since then, since April of twenty twenty, it's gone up a hundred and sixty-eight percent. So that's.
And what are these units? Every Wi-Fi session?
So, yeah, and actually I wanted to point out, I couldn't measure from twenty eighteen through because at some point the State Library of Ohio. Changed the way they count each session. So it was like comparing apples and oranges. So I started with the new. The new way they counted it. So this is, I think, every session. They measure like every forty-five minute block of use is a session. I can, I can double check that. Okay, the next one. So this is our programming. So overall, programming is down, but for twenty twenty-two, that number was sixty-eight percent of our pre-pandemic numbers. That's pretty good. And for twenty twenty-three, I, we will know one hundred percent surpass that number. And just since twenty twenty, it's increased by ninety percent. So we're getting there.
And the unit measure here is, is somebody who came to the program, right?
Well, this is just program software. This is.
Oh, it's number of programs.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's the attendees is.
We are one of the largest, I mean, we provide more programming than most libraries across the country. And there are still libraries that are not doing, big libraries that are not doing any programming at all. Right? Who have not come back from, from COVID to offer programming because they're still. Don't want to, you know, put their staff in harm's way.
So that's all. I'm gonna. I'll do this maybe every quarter so you can kind of see where we're at. I think that's a good time, right?
Thank you.
And we're losing the prescription of the most requested books and all that sort of stuff.
I will still, I'll do that on every other.
Okay, that's great. As I think that's interesting too.
Let's go to the building status.
John Lang, Chief Operations Officer, Property Management Design and Construction. I'll just note in my two and a half years at the library, I think this is the first board meeting where I haven't had a capital. Got a bunch brewing for next month. So before we bring those to the next, with a few updates, and I don't have a presentation, but just an amplification of the property manager report. We are catching our breath from the last batch of building openings and we've got a bunch scheduled for this summer. So finalizing dates now for Lorraine to reopen in June. Woodland Campus in July, Eastern Branch in August. Incurring with Neighborhood Block Party that we're possibly working on with the Community Development Organization and then Brooklyn in September. So it'll be a very busy summer of the buildings. Rockport and M L K are the last two projects. One is scheduled for twenty twenty-four. A quick update on, the one project I mentioned is Wal's complicated project. And I can give you an update when we meet one-on-one, but. People generally know we've gone through demolition, the branch is closed. We're waiting for our partner, which is Northwest Neighborhoods Community Development Organization. We did re-institute our meetings with them. Within the last month, we got some good news, which is that they were approved for county ARPA funding for their gap financing. As a reminder, the project was on hold because they're not able to proceed to construction without receiving the gap financing. We have a similar request in front of city council. Of which they'll know a final resolution on by June. They're very hopeful since it's a fully designed, already once bid. So it's, it's the definition of a shovel ready project. If they are successful with the city ARPA financing and we're back in business, we'll rebid and bring, they bring in resolutions to board for the guarantee maximum price construction contract and the overall project budget. So this is a case scenario, would be break ground, oh, probably late summer of twenty-three, that would be an end of twenty-four condition.
And who's our GMP contractor?
That'll be the last, that's the last one A buildings, even though it's kind of out of sequence now.
Right.
For their proposal, I'm assuming it's for ARPA, the city council?
Yes.
Are, are we in a position to write a letter of support or show other? So we've done that already? Okay.
We've been speaking with Councilperson Spencer, too. She's been a great advocate. Um, and more on the property management side, getting the reading garden prepared for the spring. We kept it open most of the winter, just closed it when the icy conditions were a little dangerous, but our regular landscape will be happening in the next month, and we're looking at some long-term streetscaping improvements. And then I think there may be, we referred, I'm not sure if it may be the board, but some community outreach on the old Huff location concerning its upkeep. So we're, property management crews are onsite every week. The building, the trash is appears, there's been some dumping, and it looks like it's on the adjacent old shopping site. So I think there was some concern expressed that the library isn't keeping our property cleaned up, but that's not the case as far as I know.
You know what, John, there was a public comment specifically about that, so. Just for the record, we're just gonna, he did answer the question about us keeping it up, so that you're saying a lot of that dumping isn't on the library's property, it's on a neighbor? Just to make sure that their question is answered about the dumping that is being done over there. So are, or can we, or should we contact the owner so that we don't keep, you know, so we don't start a Carnegie's issue? Remember how that used to happen with Novak Park? Is there something we could do to let them know that?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure we have that information, but we can track that.
I'm just saying, you know, because they're gonna keep addressing it with us, because I think that happened with Novak Park many years ago. They kept saying library's property, when Novak is not ours.
Yeah, I, I think, if you wouldn't mind reaching out to Councilwoman House, and we'll try to, to let her know, because someone needs to reach out to the owners of the, of the spot and have them deal something. And even the councilman just has to be, if the city has to go in and clean it up, somebody should clean it up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll do the advocacy, advocacy task force and foundation.
Sure, thank you so much, trustee Parker. So we did receive word yesterday from the Ohio Library Council that the House's substitute bill has went out, and it'll be in their finance committee before it goes to the Senate. It did keep the PLF at one point seven. However, there is an implication with the state income tax, income tax that may have an impact on the GRF, the general revenue. We don't know what to decree yet, but we're still staying in touch, obviously, with the whole seat to see how it pans out. We do recall last by any, only the Senate that really kept us whole, so fingers crossed on that. I think that's a good segue into the fact that we will be in Columbus next week advocating for the PLF and to mitigate any implications that HB one has, or any deals have. So I think some of you are coming with us, so we look forward to that. But that's all I have for the advocacy. Yes, I hope to see all of you tomorrow, bright and early, at the Cleveland Rees Company Challenge Kickoff Breakfast. The event purpose is to really gavernize support from corporations and organizations to become sponsors of the Cleveland Rees campaign. We have a goal for the Cleveland Rees campaign, to raise a half a million, and up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars will be support, go directly to the library. We do have an event in October, it's, it's also part of the sponsorship package. But the theme is the economic benefits of a literate workforce. We have Director Thomas, who is our emcee for the, for the morning, along with Connie O'Johnson, who's our Cleveland Rees Campaign Co-Chair, and Tom Dewey, who is our Cleveland Rees Campaign Co-Chair. Eric Gordon is our keynote, and Larisse Purnell, who's our board, the Foundation Board's Vice Chair, is moderating a panel with Council President Griffin. Hal Markman, who is an economist with the Federal Reserve, who has some good data for us to reflect on, in addition to Donna Flint, who is the Manager of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for Parker Hannigan. My sincere apologies, I'm gonna go on record in saying I forgot to invite some people whom of which I've sent a personal invitation, sincere apology today. So, but I hope you guys can all make it. Yes, that's my report.
Great.
Thank you.
Now, diversity, equity, and inclusion.
I spoke earlier today, but I think I failed to introduce myself. So my name is Ashley Boye. I'm the new Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion here at Cleveland Public Library. I have recently assumed oversight over our six ERGs, here's the CEO, one of which you heard spoke to speak today, talk on Tuesday. I'm very proud again of their work that they've done. Coming up next month, we will have, our ERG will be in support of the Cleveland Asian Festival, so that's our cultural diversity ERG. We will have a presence there as well as a booth. In June, we will have Pride and CLE, that will be our Rainbow Readers ERG, and we will also have our Black ERG that are known as BIR. They will be celebrating Juneteenth collaborative effort with Cleveland Alliance with their Freedom Festival. So those are some of the activities with our ERGs. I've also been working with our Human Resource Department. We have worked together to put together with a third party sexual harassment training for all of our CPL employees. There are two different components, one for management and one for non-management employees, and a couple other things I've been working on collaboratively with our HR department. So those are some of the most recent updates. I've also had an opportunity to reach out to and visit some of our West Side locations. Most recently, I've visited Carnegie West, South, Fulton, and Jefferson. I've been out there to meet with the employees, the management staff there, just so that I can familiarize myself with the branches, get to know the staff there, see if there's anything that I could use assistance with, and just so that they feel comfortable reaching out to me about any of their ideas, any of the challenges that they may see out in the community. That's my recent update for this month.
Ms. Boyd, only because I don't know that our newest trustees, tell a little bit about your background, since this is only the second board meeting you've been at.
Yeah, so this is only the second board meeting. I actually spent my last seventeen years, actually, my last eighteen years at the Catholic County Board of Developmental Disabilities, where I served in a number of different roles. My last two leadership roles there, I served as their Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Administrator, and prior to that, I served as their Communication and Inclusion Supervisor. So that's a little bit of background about me. So I literally came from right down the road in Twelton Lake Side, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Ms. Boyd, how, how are you adjusting, or how, how are, what's your comfort level so far with us? Have I put it, you don't have to ask me, am I putting you on the spot?
She doesn't like it.
Well, no, I want her to be comfortable. I mean, she's going out and trying to see what's happening at all the different branches, but I want her, her to make sure that she knows where things need to be, need a little bit of help or.
Everybody's been very welcoming, very responsive. I feel very comfortable. It is definitely a large, diverse organization, and so a lot of different personalities, which are welcome. So, yeah, so far, so good.
Thank you.
I always kid everybody that D E I in Latin means of God.
Yes, yes.
So. Some of the most important work we do in this library involves you, and we're very glad to have you as our new leader on those issues.
Thank you. We already, thank you, trustee Parker. We don't have no old business, the new business, we already read the exhibit. Director, I could move into?
Yeah, just the director's report. I wanted to highlight two things. One is in my director's report, it was talking about writing read where we had the Great Fortune led by Tana and her staff of, of getting, setting us up in, at the RTA stations downtown at Windermere and at West Park. We gave out over three thousand books. The mayor came by and stopped by and handed out books along with us, and the head of RTA, India Burson, joined us, and it was a great opportunity for folks. And it happened to be, there was the end of one of the baseball games, so it was crushed with people down there. So it was a great experience of working on that and doing that work, and kudos to the staff in support of that. Also want to do a, make a spotlight on Erica Marks, right? Erica, could you stand up? Erica put on her program, you know, Girl Power, had over nearly five hundred girls throughout the building, and this was like within two days of her grandfather passing, right? And she soldiered through, she got all of the things happening, and it was just a truly a great success. I was, I had a chance to go down and just kind of see everything that happened, and I just wanted to make sure you understood that we appreciate you, you know, even in times that the grief you were going through, soldiering through, to make sure that you were here for those girls. That's it for me.
Oh, I should really officially ask you what I, oh.
Inner library loan. Oh, and I wanted to speak one last thing and mention that Overdrive is, has sent out things, and on its website will say to folks that they will, they're moving to Libby. Doesn't mean that Overdrive is ending or anything of that nature. It just means that the product that they are supporting, that now ninety percent of people use is a product called Libby, right? And so I think some of our, our community members have been concerned that Overdrive is leaving, and we're not, they're not going to be able to use Overdrive in the same way. They'll still be able to access it in the very same way, it'll just have a different name, right? But it's still the same thing. And we are going to, John Skurdic and Sandy Delara Elwell, who's over at our collection department, are putting together a statement on our website, so that when people go there, they'll be able to see a statement to know, don't worry, you're still going to be able to get access.
Same service, same access.
Same service, same access, just different name.
If there's no other questions, or?
I was just gonna.
Please.
Highlight something that only because, as always, the library does a fabulous job supporting one of the largest downtown activities that happens every year, which is St. Patrick's Day. Not everybody who attends is of as good a spirit as we'd like to think they should be, but our staff performed it well. Again, we had almost no incidents in connection with the library this year. We perform usually important service by having our restrooms available and things like that, but I want to point out something. Terry Matter helped a patron and his friend find a newspaper article from nineteen eighty-seven that they were mentioned in, and it was particularly difficult because when they were quoted in the paper to the reporter, they gave fake names because they'd skipped school and not told their parents they were going to the St. Patrick's Day parade. Terry helped them figure out how to find it with their, what they remembered of the fake names they gave, and were able to find the article and get him a copy. But that's the sort of stuff that our staff does, and, and I just wanted to highlight that. There's things like that that happen virtually every day here, and I just wanted to, since it's connected to the St. Patrick's Day, and I'm the official Irish board member. And then I also want to tell you, Alice and I were lucky enough after last board meeting, a five million dollar to seven million dollar construction project that can be done virtually silently, because the service does not decline.
You can hear it a little bit today, right now.
But I, but the idea that all this work being done for the high-density shelving installation on the stuff that was done to this building that we hoped would have the opportunity to do someday, we're doing it. There really aren't very many places where you can spend five to seven million dollars and not be apparent in terms of interruptions to service and, and, you know, talk to the people at Sherman Williams about, well, even a construction apart from where they are now is done to their, to them. And I just want to commend everybody on our staff and our contractors for the fact that this project is well on its way, and it really looks like there'll be no impact on service at all during the time period.
It's astonishing to go out there and get a tour of that place. I recommend you all.
So Mike wanted to make sure that I offer a tour for any board member who would like to go.
And I always like to point out that the, one of the subcontractors is Corrigan Brothers Moving. I'm not related to them. I happen to know, know the, the company for a long time. They're the actual, the non-college brothers of two women who had embalming degrees, and Corrigan Funeral Home and Corrigan Brothers Moving are related, but I'm not related to them.
Thank you. There's nothing else, I call this meeting adjourned.
It's the shortest meeting we've had in a very long time.